It's now six o'clock and we'll call this meeting to order. We're having some technical difficulties and so therefore there's only two mics that are working. And I'm going to ask the people in the back to please make sure that the audio is...I know that the video's working but the audio is likewise audible. There will be only two mics tonight to work with. We want to make sure that the public is fully aware of our difficulties. But we'll ask the city secretary who's got one mic and then we'll pass it on to...for the invocation, to Pastor Brad. And we'll do the best that we can, so bear with us, okay? Go ahead.
Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, August the 29th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin the regular meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty with justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have here in Brownsville. And Lord, we lift up those that were affected by this storm. Lord, we ask for healing for every one of them that were hurt. We ask for strength and encouragement for every responder, both the professionals and the volunteers that are reaching out to help others and save those that need help. Lord, we ask you to draw each of their hearts to yours so that they can receive the strength and encouragement they need. Lord, we ask you to give them direction, provision, provide for all their needs, and draw families together during this time, Lord God. Draw neighbors together and keep everybody safe in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Along with that, I want to mention some of the relief efforts that are happening from Brownsville. Tonight and tonight only, Denny's on Parete Slime Road just north of Alton Glora is accepting non-perishable foods. I say "tonight only" because they're leaving at four o'clock in the morning to go to Rockport. And that's my son-in-law, so I can guarantee it's going to go there. First Baptist Church and School has two mobile kitchens that can each serve 20,000 meals a day. And one of those left this morning, another one is preparing to leave, and a third team is preparing to go relieve them. They are accepting non-perishable foods as well as finances to keep those kitchens going. If somebody wants to donate online, there's an organization called Somebody Cares Ministries that is based right there in Houston. It's a network of churches and it's an international organization and I personally know the director of that, Doug Stringer. It's a reputable organization and they're doing a great job, so that's a possibility for those that want to donate online. Church of the Good Shepherd on Morrison Road is one part of that network. And they respond to disaster relief all over the world with their connections. I know that the City of Brownsville is also doing some things, and I'll leave that to the mayor and commissioners to talk about what the City of Brownsville is doing in the relief effort. Thank you.
We will now have the mayor's activity update.
Yeah, and I'm going to make it because of the audio difficulties that we have, there has been a lot of audio problems. There's been a lot of first responders and from Brownsville that have gone to Houston. There have been a lot of volunteers. I want to thank everybody on behalf of the city for showing of that wonderful kindness that we all are capable of doing. But I would ask the city to put on their website any other additional services that we are providing through the city to make sure that everybody knows. And then also, the Red Cross, there's other ways to help besides what Pastor Brad has mentioned. And be sure and put all of those outlets on the website so people, if they wish, could add to the wonderful efforts that our community has done in relation to this particular disaster. And at the same time, I see Odie here and all the people that were at the command center, I want to thank and express my gratitude on behalf of the commission and the City of Brownsville for all those great efforts. We were blessed and fortunate that we didn't get a direct hit or quite frankly, much of an effect from this storm. But a lot of people have been affected and we need to be mindful of our brothers and sisters who are in need. So, other than that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
We have now the commissioner's activity update.
Want to invite everyone to participate, come out and support if you're able. On September the 10th, the Fire Department is hosting the first 9/11 Memorial Ride. A lot of people are working hard to put the ride together and it's certainly for a good reason and should be lots of fun. Also, the Wellness Coalition will be collecting diapers to be taken up to the disaster area so donations can be made of diapers at the market on Saturday and also at Seventh and Park.
I just want to add to that...is it on? Okay. I just want to add to that that I really want to thank Public Works and all of our departments, that our police department, I know we had the Bike Patrol out there. They've been non-stop working with all of the efforts that the city has been doing. But before the storm got here, when we didn't know where it was going, when we knew it was gaining a lot of power and strength, and let me tell you, it came within miles of our city. When that was happening, all of our city staff was working 72 hours without taking any breaks, not going home, working overnight, cleaning drains, preparing sandbags, going and dumping sand. And I just want to say that I have seen the most...it didn't come, so now all of our streets are really clean. But a lot of illegal dumping and all kinds of things got picked up just in preparation for this and things that normally would have been paid to go into our landfill and whatnot. So I really want to thank city staff for making sure that absolutely everybody in the path of this storm of what we thought might be coming was taken care of. And that's all thanks to our Public Works Police Department, everybody that came together to make sure that our storm drains were clean and people had sandbags. Also on top of that, I just want to mention several local businesses. I mean, I know the city got a trailer. I know the county got a trailer. I know several trucking companies. I know Seahorse Transportation was another one that offered one of their trailers. So if you look around, there are a lot of businesses that are collecting water, food, canned food, toiletries, diapers, just as it's been mentioned. I have never seen such an amazing effort from our city. When something happens to one of us Texans, we all come together. And I just want to remind the public to open your hearts. A pack of bottle water costs less than $5 and it makes such a difference for somebody right now in Houston or wherever, Rockport, that doesn't have electricity, that doesn't have any running water, that doesn't have safe water to brush their teeth, that hasn't taken a bath in five to six days. I know my cousins in Corpus are still one of the only families in Corpus that doesn't have any power. So can you imagine not having power for almost a week? I mean, that's something that is unheard of with the heat that we have here in the valley, well, in Texas. So I just want to thank everybody and remind everybody to come together and make sure that we can do everything that we can within our power to make sure that North Texas and everybody affected by this storm is taken care of. And I applaud everybody that's coming together in efforts for that.
And just to allude once again, thank you to all the departments for everything that you all did throughout the time when Mayor had called the city into a state of emergency. The efforts continue. We're out at the southmost...I mean, I'm sorry, at the Public Library on Central Boulevard. We're going to be there until Friday and we're going from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you to all the volunteers. Thank you to everybody. And although they didn't choose to remain anonymous, but they didn't really want any mention, I want to thank the Parra family, all the way from Mother Parra to High Men to Mary and to Tommy. They generously donated $15,000 to the city today to be able to continue with the efforts so that we can be able to send more products to the people up north. So, we will conclude hopefully by the end of the weekend. And our goal is to fill three trailers up and to send up to the Corpus Christi, to the Houston area, so that we can get them out there and we can get folks the proper things. But it has taken a little bit longer. A lot of people was like, "We need it out there, we need it now." We understand. But we also need to be accountable for what we're sending to the people. So we can't just send everything thrown into a trailer. We're properly packing, we're properly documenting, everything's on pallets. And I want to thank the volunteers for the gentlemen that are taking the trailers up there. We've already identified some of the food banks. They just asked us for 48 hours to please hold up for 48 hours, let the water recede, be able to receive the merchandise, and they're going to properly be able to get it out to the people. So once again, if you can come and help us, and please come by. And believe it or not, we had a little girl donate $2 that she had in her pocket yesterday. I thought that was the most beautiful thing. And, you know, a lady that showed up that you could have sworn she didn't have anything to eat, and she brought a bag full of groceries to be able to donate. So, to all the citizens of Brownsville and the surrounding areas, because I know that there are people coming from the surrounding areas, to please come by. And once again, the city, there are, like Jessica said, there are people set up all around the city, but the city's trailers that are going to be going out, this is a labor of love on behalf of everybody. This is not one person, this is not one group, this is not the City Commission. This is the citizens of Brownsville sending it to those that are in need. So once again, please come by. We'll be there possibly maybe Saturday, because I know the PUB wanted to help out. So we're considering maybe staying open Saturday. And Radio Manantial also wanted to come on and do a live remote. So, you know, just everybody's coming together. So, that's the proper way to show that Brownsville does care for our brothers in all other parts. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number three, consent item...
Item number three, consent agenda items A and B.
All those in favor say aye. Motion passes.
Next, we have the public hearings, agenda item number four, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1202-J, amending Chapter 42 Emergency Services, Article 3 Emergency Medical Services, Section 42-101, rates for city emergency medical services and dealing with related matters.
Mayor, I wanted to place this item on the agenda. I know that it had an expiration date of September the 30th, but it came to my attention through sources that the rate that we are charging for transfers is a lot higher than other places in the valley. And it was my understanding that when we passed this, that's not the information that we were given. So the commission passed it under the impression that maybe that was the standard rate for the valley when in fact it is higher. So, I just wanted to place this item on the agenda, whether the commission feels comfortable tabling it or even acting on it, because it's September the 30th. I just wanted to place it in good faith that when it was pointed out to us, that we did do something about it.
Okay, this is public hearing. I'll entertain any other public comments.
Mayor, pending on this, we just received a package and Chief, was this delivered by your office?
Yes.
Okay. I received an agenda with no backup, no information on it, and now we have information on our desk. I would like to take this information, go through it, disseminate it, and if it's okay with you, table to next week's meeting on September 5th.
That sounds good to me.
Perfectly fine with me. I just wanted to bring it up and make it an official item and make the commission aware that it had happened.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item will be tabled. Item number five.
Agenda item number five, second public hearing to discuss the 2017 Ad Valarum tax rate for fiscal year 2018.
Good evening, honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Today we have our second public hearing to discuss a possible tax rate increase for tax year fiscal year 2018. If the city adopts effective tax rate of .688834 per $100 valuation, the proposed 2018 general fund budget will have a shortfall of $668,271. If city maintains the current tax rate of .700163 per $100 valuation, the proposed general fund budget will have a shortfall of $1.3 million. We intend to balance that with a surplus projected by PUB cash transfer. If the city adopts a rollback rate of .746583 per $100 valuation, the general fund will have a surplus of $1,301,374. This is a bullet point view of what the percentage rate increase would be if each of the various tax rates get adopted. If we adopt the effective rate, there's a zero percentage increase over the effective tax rate would be 0%. If the percentage increase over the effective tax rate is adopted, you have a 1.71% effective tax rate increase. If the proposed tax rate of the rollback rate of .746583 gets adopted, the percentage tax increase over the effective tax rate is .838%. Towards the right-hand side, you have the distribution of how the funds get distributed. On the right-hand side, you get the debt service, that's the amount that gets transferred to debt service fund to take care of the bond payments on there. The MNO is basically what gets transferred to the general fund. As you see, the amounts differ at each of the different levels. Last week, Commissioner De Leon wanted to go on a bar graph of the property tax rates by jurisdictions. As you'll see there, Brownsville Independent School District has a tax rate of $1.15.15.25, followed by the city of .700163 at 28%, and Cameron County of .407743 or 16%. That's for tax year 2016. For tax year 2017, the school district increased their tax rate and it has been adopted. It increased it to 1.265. Cameron County has...are proposing to maintain the same tax rate. City's also proposing to maintain the same tax rate. And the only other one there is Texas Alamos College is proposing to increase it slightly less than half a penny. These are the statement of revenue expenditure change in fund balance of each one of these effects. If the effective rate gets adopted, you have your revenue server expenditures. You'll have a deficit of $668,000. That's in the second column. Again, same schedule. If we use the current tax rate, we'll balance the budget with $1.3 million coming from the reserve. We use the rollback rate, which is higher than what we're proposing, we'll have a surplus funds of $1.3 million. This is a history of the property tax rates for the last 20 years. You'll see since 2012, fiscal 2012, we maintained the same tax rate of .700613 cents per $100 valuation. And that's the tax rate we're proposing. This gives you a percentage tax increase above the effective tax rate for every half penny. Increase every half pennies, .73% and so forth. Go all the way down to the maximum rate or the rollback rate, .746583. Percentage increase, 8.38%. This is the amount of added tax levies over the current...over the effective rate. We adopt the effective rate, we have a loss in the general fund of $646,109. We adopt the current rate, which is four rows under them, we have a balanced budget with a $1.3 million transfer from PUB. What does this mean to average home resident? Last year, the average home resident price valuation was $88,640. This year, the valuation is $90,235. If we use the current tax rate, the taxpayer is going to be paying $632.20. If we use effective tax rate, $621.56. And if we use a rollback rate, $673.68. That concludes the presentation. Have any questions?
This is the second public hearing to discuss. Any other comments on this issue?
Is this going to close or does this...
Close.
Close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Second.
I don't think we have an approval. We just close. Okay, thank you guys. Number six.
Agenda item number six, public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2018 budget.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this presentation is basically the same presentation we have last year...excuse me, last month, last week, I'm sorry, excuse me, last week. I'll briefly go over the city budget and the general fund budget, and if you have any questions, I'll go ahead and answer as best I can. This is our third public hearing regarding the budget. Basically, going over the same schedule we had last time. We had the budget presentation first, we had a deficit of revenues under expenditures of $5.3 million. We had a budget adjustments listed on there that decreased the deficit by $4,3852. The change that we're proposing on this one is to balance the budget by $1.3 million using the reserves, the reserve funds. This is a scheduled...this is a bar graph of all the revenues for all funds citywide. That includes general fund and all enterprise funds. The main question is where does the revenues come, what types of revenue city has? The main one, you'll see there's property taxes of 31.25%. It's followed by fees and services at 24.77% and then sales tax of 19.98%. Similar schedules, citywide, all funds included, excludes internal fund transfers. Where does money go? By function, you have public safety taking 41.58%. And then you have debt service of 12.84%. And then you have the general government, 11.84%. This is where the funds, by function, where the money goes. This is a similar paragraph representing the funds. These are all the different funds the city has. Where does...the general fund, of course, has the most activity of $100 million or 71.35%. And then you have your various funds on there that represent the portion of all the activities citywide. Same similar schedule expenditures. Where do all the expenditures reside? Of course, general fund has all the expenditures, 71.35%. Then you have your debt service bond fund and so forth. Tax rate analysis, this budget is proposed to be balanced using the same tax rate we have this year. We're proposing the same tax amount. This is a bar graph distribution of what we call the debt service or general fund. How much the blue portion is the amount that goes into the general fund or the MNO. And the orange section is the amount that goes into our debt service in order to pay off our bonds, bond payments that we have, debts that we have outstanding. This is a paragraph percentage-wise, how much goes into debt service, how much is retained in general fund. Debt service usually gets 36%, general fund takes 64%. Certified tax rule, of course, you have incremental increases over the years due to ongoing activities, construction activities in the city. This is building permits, as you see, for 2012 to 2016, they've been pretty consistent. This is a budget summary of all the funds, general funds and all the other funds on there. You'll see general fund, it's balanced using the budget change in fund balance, using the fund balance. This schedule is a...all the revenues and all the expenditures by classification. Classification meaning what types of, especially on the expenditure side, personnel, services, materials and supplies. The same schedule. There's a paragraph representing this information, but I'll go over it in a little while. Towards the right-hand last right-hand column, you have the proposed budget draft. You have total revenues of $104 million, total expenditures of $105 million. You have unassigned fund balance, we use proposed, of 1.3. They'll balance the general fund budget for 2018, proposed budget. Budget highlights, of course, property tax revenues increased $727,000. Sales tax, we're projecting a 1%, very conservative 1% increase over 2016. Actual noting that 2017, we're down. We're not doing as well as we did previous years. PUB contribution for 2018 is up $634,000 compared to 2017 budget. The bridge transfer amount has increased $159,000 or 47.5% compared to 2017 budget. General personal costs, the third bullet point on there, you have your...what's new for 2017 in personal costs? Of course, you had your medical cost contributions of $2 million. Increased colas for fire and PD of $975,000. And then you have your full, $1.8 million first full year of the implementation of the compensation study. Personal summary, this is a bar graph, total number of regular employees of non-union employees, excuse me, of 775 or 64%. Police, 244. Fire EMS, 180 positions. It's a breakdown of positions where they're located, general fund, convention, tourism and so forth on there. General fund summary, you have...this is just the general fund, of course, using the property tax calculated, similar schedule. This is the paragraph I was referring to. This is a paragraph of all the revenues and cash transfers for the general fund by classification. Of course, the largest one you're going to have is a property taxes of 27.20% followed by sales taxes of 27.12%. This is in the general fund. Fees and service followed by fees and service at 20.26%. And then you have the PUB cash transfer of 8%. 8.88%. Similar schedule by expenditures, again, these are by functions, not by classification, by functions. Police and safety, the majority of 56.49%. General government, 15.61%. Followed by culture and recreation, 10.54%. Personnel services scheduled, this is a bar graph representing the...by function, all the expenditures, of course. Personnel costs, that's the majority of the expenditures reflected on this schedule. This is a general fund expenditure by categories. This is what we're talking about, categories, classifications. As you'll see, personnel is the largest portion of that paragraph of that personnel cost. Fire EMS take up 25%, police 40%. And all other departments take 35% of costing personnel. And you have your other items of expenditures, material supplies, maintenance of buildings, equipment and so forth. This is a schedule of unassigned fund balances through the history. In 2017, we're projecting a fund balance of 15.42%. Historically, we've always done better than that percentage. Sales tax revenues, I've gone over the sales tax revenues of current...this sales tax actual year-to-date, we have a decrease of 2.46% as of June, or $516,000. Over original budget, we're down $932,000. Amended budget, we have a slight increase of $116,000. These are all the department expenditures, summaries by department. You have your actuals, your adopted. In the far right-hand, you have your proposed. The rest of the schedules, I went through them already on the rest of the funds. Do you want me to continue on them or do you have any other questions on the budget?
Again, this is public hearing. Anybody here on any of the issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Close, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. And that's as far as it goes. Lupe, thank you so much for your hard work, okay? Item number seven.
Item number seven, public comment period. We do not have anyone that signed up for the public comment at this time. Next week.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you everybody for being here.